All right. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the freedom to meet here and assemble today and take care of the city business. And God, we thank you for the salvation that you provide through your Son, Jesus. And just pray, God, that everything we do today will be a reflection of that and a reflection of the freedom that you have provided. We promise to give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on July 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of July 8th through the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We have a special presentation, the A A E M Presidential Award honoring Mrs. Deborah Gaither, so we ask you to come forward, please. I'm just gonna stand here. It's Gaither, you'll stand at the podium. This is a news release that was released on June 21st, 2022. This is, Gaither receives the A A E M Presidential Award. Edgewall County, Alabama Gaston, Edgewall County Emergency Management Agency Director, Deborah L. Gaither was recently selected as the recipient of the 2021-2022 Alabama Association of Emergency Managers Presidential Award. The award presentation took place at the A A E M A A E M A Annual Conference that was held in Tuscaloosa this year. The award recipient is chosen each year by the current A A E M Board President and presented at the A A E M A A E M A Disaster Conference to a member for outstanding service to the Alabama Associations of Emergency Managers. Deborah Gaither was unanimously elected by her peers to serve as the A A E M Area Six Representative. She will represent Blount County, Cherokee County, Coleman County, DeKalb County, Edgewall County, Jackson County, Limestone, Madison, Marshall, and Morgan Counties for serving on the A A E M Board. Please join us in congratulating Mrs. Deborah Gaither. Ms. Gaither, you have a lot of counties to cover, and even though they presented you the award, we appreciate you so much for all the things that you do for Edgewall County and the surrounding areas, and we want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Speech.
Can I say something?
Please.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. A little bit embarrassing, but I appreciate it. But nothing that I do is alone. It's the entire emergency management staff, it's law enforcement, it's fire. There are so many people that make my job easier in Edgewall County, and I have to thank them for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you again. We will continue with our agenda for the item under unfinished business. No action is necessary by the council regarding the resolution on 216 South 16th Street in District 3. The nuisance has already been abated by the owner. Item 10, and this is the first time, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution or the abatement of nuisance on property located at 1012 Seventh Avenue in District 5, Air Greer and Allen and Sharita N. Harris Sims being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come forward, give your name and address, please.
My name's Adam Greer, Adam Scott Greer, and that's my residence. I had, it had burnt on December 29th, right before the beginning of the year. I have been trying to get it taken care of. I've been starting over. I really don't know what I'm supposed to say. I mean, I've been having it kinda hard getting it cleaned up. I've been wanting to get the garage area cleaned up myself. I was gonna let the city take the house down. I was gonna pay the, I spoke with someone over tearing it down with the city, and they said that they would clean it up if I paid them 1,500 up front to take it down. I don't know if that person is here, don't know. And that was what I was gonna do. Is that familiar?
Real quick, Mr. Greer, you said that this is your residence. I mean, where are you currently living?
I live in Rainbow City.
Okay.
Yeah, I've done.
Would you give us your address for the records?
18 Horizon Place, Rainbow City.
So you want the city to just tear the house down and leave the garage?
Yeah, because I'm wanting to do the garage. The garage is already on the ground.
Okay.
The garage is on the ground, and I can get a skid steer, because I have my own pool business, and I can get a skid steer, and I can clean up the garage. I can get the big, you know, trash cans that you can, you can order, you can rent the big long.
Roll-off dumpsters.
Yeah, roll-off dumpsters. And I can put all that in, because I got, I got a car in there. I got seven motorcycles and stuff like that I was wanting to get out, and I was gonna scrap all that stuff and use that money to help pay for the, to keep me from having to come out so much money to pay the city to clean up the rest of the mess. Because I want to keep my property, or not have no liens against my property, if that was the case. This is my first rodeo with this, you know, so I really don't know how all of it plays out. I'm just trying to do it.
Well, I mean, ultimately, it just comes down to you're the property owner, you're responsible for cleaning it up.
Yeah, I understand that.
And if you don't clean it up, it gets to this point, and then the city says, well, if you haven't cleaned it up, we're gonna go clean it up, and we're gonna put the lien against the property.
Yeah, and it's only been, it's only been six months, and I've been having to start all the way over.
Yeah.
So, and it's been.
I understand. I just wanted you to understand the process here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, that's, that's all that's happening here is, once you get to a certain point where it hasn't been cleaned up, the city has to act on behalf of all the other neighbors and citizens that live around the property.
Right.
You know, it's affecting their property values. In some cases, you have overgrown lawns on these abandoned properties and rodents, you know, infestations developed there. So, the cities, that's, that's where we're at right now, and I, we'll wait to hear from Mr. Harbison. But ultimately, if you're in agreement with the house being torn down.
I am in agreement with that, yes.
Then we'll probably move forward and go ahead and assess the abatement today, go ahead and approve it.
Yeah.
And then you'll have some time, if you want to go out there and do all the work that you can do, you know, in the meantime.
Yeah, and see if I could get a little bit of time to clean it, clean up the garage area, because I didn't want them to put that big machine on my slab and bust my slab, because I was, I tried to get the house rebuilt, and they said my business had to be in business for two years, and it was a little shy than that.
I can relate to that, I understand. Those banks are pretty tough on small business owners when it comes to getting loans.
Yeah, and they wouldn't give me the loan big enough, because it was shy.
Yes, I understand. Well, we'll wait to hear from Mr. Harbison on it, but just, it, it sounds like you may have some time to be able to go in there and get as much of it cleaned up yourself before the city actually comes.
All right, I appreciate that, yeah.
Thanks, man.
That's it?
Yeah.
Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the business department. This case obviously involves a burn structure. We've, it actually burned in December. We filed our case January 10th of this year. There have been no improvements, no permits approved, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
I have a question, sir, before you sit down. Have we changed policy about, I thought they can make payments for over three years. Is that still current, or do they have to pay something up front now?
No, the demolition will take place with a resolution from the council, and he'll be sent a bill. He, you know, he'll have four options as far as making payments. He can take advantage of whatever he wants, or do nothing. If he does nothing, then it comes back to the council for a lien. But first and foremost, that structure needs to be removed. That's set there as it is since December. So, that's gotta be cleaned up, and then he can decide how he wants to move forward as far as paying it.
Yeah, I understand. I was just wondering, when I heard him say he had to pay 1,500 up front, I never heard that.
I didn't have that discussion, I don't know who that came from.
Wanted to make sure nothing's changed.
Mr. Greer, do you understand that? Basically, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna move to abate the nuisance, the burn, and tear down the, the structure, so as soon as you possibly can, I would go over there and get any belongings or anything like that out of there that, that's of value to you, number one. Number two, once we do that, the city will send you a bill for the cost of the demolition, and you'll have some payment options. You know, you can stretch it out over a long period of time and just pay a little bit at a time, or, or whatever, you know, you can work with the building department on that. So, two things, go ahead and act now to get your possessions out of there, and then, once the demolition is done, you'll receive a bill and you can set up some payment plan with the city to avoid it going as a lien against your property.
Our next item is, oh, I'm sorry. What is the pledge of the council?
Move to abate.
Sir?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1814 Emanuel Avenue in District 5, and this is Jason Keith Shanifeld, and wife, Kristy Oliver Shanifeld, subject to the mortgage in favor of Price Buster LLC, being the last known owners. Is there anyone speaking opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, we have someone out there.
Okay, if you'll come to the podium and give your name and your address. Yes.
My name's Jason Shanifeld, 1814 Emanuel Avenue.
Okay.
Kristy Shanifeld, it's 1814 Emanuel, we're the owners.
Okay, and?
And we've done a lot of work over there trying to get it cleaned out. We've, I mean, we've got 90% of it done already.
So you're living on this, you're living in this property now?
Mm-hmm. That's our, I mean, that's our only residence.
So, I guess the other question, have you been in contact with the building director, Mr. Harbison?
No, we, the last person I spoke to was Jan, and she come out there and saying where we had done some of it.
Okay, so I guess my question is, what, what are you asking from the council?
To let us finish cleaning it up and doing all the repairs?
We have pictures of it, you know, what we've done so far, so.
Okay.
We only like this little bit of it done, complete. I mean, we had to do some flooring, stuff like that, no repair there, seating work, stuff like that.
A lot of painting.
Like I said, we did, and painting, we've got, like I said, she said 90% of it done. About 95%.
Well, I just want to make sure, and we're waiting to hear from the building department, but I just wanted, as a general rule, to make sure you understand, you know, there's kind of a list of priorities that the building department has on what's important, you know? So, a lot of times, what I'll see happen is homeowners will come in here and they'll say, well, we've done all this work on it. We painted the inside, and we put up new fixtures, and we did all this stuff. Well, the building department's worried about, number one, is there a nuisance to the surrounding neighbors? Is there trash and debris and stuff, number one? Number two, is the house structurally sound? You know, if there's a hole in the roof, or a window that's busted out, or the door won't shut, or there's no back door on it, just work closely with the building department to make sure that what y'all are doing to the house is actually addressing the issues that the building department have. Because, you know, the building department doesn't care if you plant a new flowerbed in the backyard, you know what I mean? Even though it looks, you're, you're gonna say, hey, we improved this. That's not something the building department's worried about as far as these types of cases go. But anyway, we'll hear from Mr. Harbison, the building department.
We've got almost everything cleared up outside, there's not a whole lot left out there.
Well, again, we default to the building department. Mr. Harbison goes out a couple of days before these hearings and takes pictures and shares them. You guys don't all see them, but they, they get passed around up here, so, you know, we'll wait to hear from Mr. Harbison.
And that's who you should be in contact with?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in December of last year. We were called out to the property by DHR with some concerns with the interior of the house. The interior of the house was so full of furniture, the outside, these pictures were taken two days ago. You can see, in my opinion, not much, if anything's been cleaned up on the outside. We could not do a thorough inspection on the inside because you couldn't walk through the house. The property is condemned, the, the owners were told they were allowed to stay there 30 days, and then they would have to vacate. We've been back and forth with that, with that order from the city that they continue to violate. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Harb, Mr. Harbison, so this couple does not own this property? They own this property?
I think they, they are involved in some ownership.
Who owns it?
Oh, okay.
There are others listed that have an interest.
Yeah.
This is not a demolition, is it? This is cleanup.
Demolition?
Is this demolition or cleanup? Demolition.
We have, we have the pictures.
They've taken it today?
Yeah, they've taken it today. I mean, it's, I had a car go to order, you know.
Do you have, I mean, do you have them printed out so that we can look at them?
Send those, uh-huh, yeah.
All right.
You have copies of them?
We can give copies, but it's good as well, so we're just.
So the house has already been condemned, Brian?
Yeah.
Do you know why, what was the, was it just the general debris and trash that caused the condemnation? Or is there a structure?
We cannot go through the interior of the house, because we cannot walk through it.
Yeah.
We haven't been given opportunity to look at it. They may say this today that the outside didn't clean up, you see the pictures two days ago, so. We're asking.
Have they seen the pictures?
Yeah. Brian, you said, and not, I don't want to linger on this, but you said you guys were called out there by DHR. Are there children involved in this?
There were.
Okay.
But the kid, it's not a case with kids, so.
They have to be there.
Well, that's what I keep coming back to. If the home's condemned, what's the path forward here? I mean.
For Brian, is there a path forward?
I mean, Brian, if we gave them 30 days to finish cleaning it all up, and they get it all cleaned up, and it, and it's spick and span, does that, is there a path forward here?
It's not just the issue of the clean, if you decide to recommend table it for 30 days, but we would need access to the inside, so we're talking about your pictures, what exists on the inside, as of next year.
You said you got pictures today on your phone?
Yes.
I'd like to see them, because compared to what I'm looking up here.
I'm a hoarder, man, and I made my, so I'm here. I made my, man. I mean, I don't do that.
I mean, these, these pictures are really troubling.
I looked at them, and I know.
Absolutely. This morning.
for me because they're actually in the house, so I'm gonna recommend that we table this for 30 days.
Second.
You have to let Mr. Harbison in that house to do an inspection, and I'm telling you, in 30 days, when this comes back, it's gonna be voted on, okay? So, I mean, again, this is y'all's one shot, and it's a lot of work. Y'all got a lot of work to do over there.
Okay, there's, when it comes out, we need to leave, I had so much to do.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, you see, that's how we got here, is because we didn't, we can't give you direct, clear direction on what you've got to do when he can't even get inside the home to look at it. So, I'm gonna table this, but I'll just tell you, I think Mr. Harbison's recommendation is right, and I'm just trying to give you guys one more shot. So, you got 30 days, assuming the council approves it.
Mr. Shanifeld, have you gotten rid of your harder skills?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? A harder, are you, are you through with being a harder? Okay.
I'm through with it. I'm through with it.
Okay. Because as councilman, as councilman worthy says, this needs to be up on a board.
No, leave up to it.
All right, I'll make a motion, we table for 30 days.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is the time and place to provide an opportunity for the public comment regarding the City of Gaston's application for a grant through the Edward Byrd Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, the fiscal year 2022. This is local solicitation. The amount is $26,219, and the proposed use of the funds is for the purchase of five dry suits and three dive computers to be used by the Edgewall County Dive Team. This is a combined team that assists with all water and dive team-related incidents within the county. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the, the annual grant. We are the pass-through entity for this grant, and we ask that it be moved through today.
Okay, you asking for it to be brought up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll likely oppose it unless we can get Chief Jaggers to demonstrate one of these dry suits. Is he willing to do so?
I want to only do it one time.
If, if we had them, I'd like to see it myself.
That could be a favor, that's right. Thank you.
We want to consider these votes together.
It's a resolution, so you can just entertain a motion for its adoption.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? We've already discussed. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing, this is in our local agreement with the Edgewall County Commission and the Edgewall County Sheriff Department. This relates to the JAG grant in item 12. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam President, just quick, housekeeping, I think there's a typo on here, but it should be fine. The, this says in the amount of 29,219. The previous one said 26,219?
Which one?
26, ma'am.
26.
Yeah.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Sorry, I needed to amend my paper here. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our last resolution adopting the Alabama Emergency Management Agency Division, this is Phase 2 of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a multi-jurisdictional plan that meets the condition required to reserve federal disasters assistance. Ms. Gaither?
This is not the annual local emergency hazard mitigation plan that you always say. This is regional, and it will open us up to be federally and state compliant. Also, it will open avenues of alternate funding for, for us, too. So we just need approval of and signature for the approval to send back in this day.
There has been discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one, requested by myself. It's a resolution authorizing the sponsorship of the annual job fair on August 10th at the venue in conjunction with the Career Center. Ask for unanimous consent today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item of new business is awarding the bid number 3474 for Oscar Adams Elementary Access Roadway. We discussed it at pre-council, where this will be a great access to the Adams Elementary School, and also, we'd like to thank Commissioner Jeff Washington for his help in helping us to bring this to fruition. So I'm asking for unanimous consent for the. for this uh, project.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I ask for the adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Uh, we have uh, department reports, we have two. Uh, is Mr. Chatte Hallman here? He want to talk about the PGA tournament at Twin Bridges Golf Course.
How are y'all? We are hosting the Alabama Open uh, this weekend. This is our second year to host. This will conclude, usually they're out of sight for a couple of years, so this will be our last year hosting. Uh, we've got about eighty players registered from the state of Alabama and the Florida Panhandle. Uh, so we'll have quite a few coming from out of town, staying in hotels, using our restaurants, entertainment areas. The city uh, for, on my end, being a member of the Alabama Northwest Florida PGA section, there are forty-one sections for the PGA of America. We owe the city a big thank you because they revived uh, this event last year. Um, this event's been around since nineteen thirty-nine. Uh, it's kind of heyday was through the nineties, early two thousands. Uh, like a lot of businesses, uh, last ten years, there's been sponsorship issues, things of that nature. Twenty-twenty, this event didn't happen because of COVID. Uh, they were struggling again to get sponsorships for this event. Twenty-twenty-one looked like another year, a second year in a row, they weren't going to be able to host it. I got with our executive director and Nick Hall and talked about, you know, us hosting and the city was willing to put some sponsor dollars in and bring the event here. So this, it's huge for the city, but it's also huge for this event. Uh, because this year we doubled uh, sponsorships. We have five other outside corporate sponsors that have come on board. Uh, so, you know, a big thank you to y'all for saving this event and, you know, making it what it should be. Uh, you know, it wa- it was a big step for us back in the right direction and, and we appreciate, you know, what the city's done and hopefully y'all appreciate what we've brought to the city.
That's why I say thank you. Uh, as you can tell, uh, Mr. Hallman's uh, kind of quiet, soft-spoken, but uh, he's a giant in the golf industry and uh, under his leadership, of course, with our administration, mentioning Nick Hall, the mayor's office, uh, Kerry Payne and others. Uh, it's a pretty big deal to get this tournament two years in a row. It's a pretty big deal to get this tournament for one year. But it speaks to the level of our golf course at Twin Bridges, uh, that's under the leadership of, of Chatte and, and his team over there. So thank you guys for what you've done. We have one of the finest public golf courses in this part of the country. It's just an ideal place, a great location. There's water on fourteen holes basically that you can see. Uh, it, it's heavily played now that the greens have been replaced, that, that's been a, a key component. But it takes, uh, everything's got a personal touch out there and it takes a, a leader such as Chatte with his staff that makes people want to come back. And I, I hear it all the time that they love playing the golf course, and so it's exciting to hear uh, the success of the new sponsors and uh, but I just want to thank you. You're, 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 you're behind, you're, you're a typical outstanding leader where you're behind the scenes, getting everything done and probably giving credit to others, but I, I just want to recognize you for all that you've done for Twin Bridges and for the City of Gadsden, so thank you.
You're welcome. It's, you know, like any business, you know, we couldn't be where we are, you know, without y'all's support. Uh, you know, a good team of employees that, you know, I've been there seven years, that it's, you know, taken a little time in places to get the right people in place, uh, because, you know, y'all know as well as anybody, people are what makes things happen. And, you know, we're just trying to get the right people in there and get out of their way and let them do their thing. So that, that's the most important factor. And y'all's support is, is huge. That's what's really made the difference these last few years with believing in us on the greens and seeing that, you know, the difference it made. Thank you very much.
Course looks great, Chatte.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, at this time, Ms. Nelson will give us some information concerning our polling, uh, places for the city election.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I would like to ask for the public's help uh, to make sure that your voting records are up to date, and you can contact the clerk's office or the Board of Registars to do that. Or you can go online and uh, update your voting address um, on, through the online system of the Secretary of State's office. So feel free to call the clerk's office if you need to do any of those things and we will help you through that. Um, I just want to remind everybody of what the city election polling places are, and I'll go through these one district at a time. District one will be voting at Antioch Family Life Center and East Gadsden Community Center. For District two, and this is a change on one of these, it'll be the East Gadsden Community Center and it'll also be Thompson Community Center. For District three, former Gadsden High School Lunchroom, Carver Community Center and the Thompson Community Center. For District four, we have another change. It will be the venue, Meadowbrook Family Life Center and Downtown Civic Center. District five, we have the Downtown Civic Center and the Tabernacle. The Tabernacle is a location that is not used for the federal and county and state elections, but we still use it for city elections. In District six, Dwight Baptist Church, and that's a new location due to um, Elliott Community Center being demolished and a new center being built. The other one for District six is Walnut Park Community Center. So for District seven, we have Dwight Baptist Church and Kiwanis Pavilion. Thank you.
We have a citizen request. We have Kevin.
I almost said Keith. Uh, Kevin Blackwood on the SPAN program.
First of all, I appreciate you not calling me Keith. That was a, it's a hard cross to bear sometimes to be his brother, but I try to do it the best I can. I really want to come and thank the mayor and the city council for y'all's continued support of the SPAN program. Considering our location, I think it's important for me to at least come by to let you know how we're doing in that building and then the kids that we're serving. Uh, this fiscal year, we have served a hundred and twelve. Uh, last year was a hundred and twenty-one. Uh, we've sent fifty-two kids back to school in the right grade this fiscal year. And I don't know, you know, if you wrap your head around that number of fifty-two of, without the SPAN program, the fifty-two kids are going to be back in the same grade, repeating again. And if you know statistics, you know, once a kid repeats one grade, the odds of them dropping out increase a lot. And we're trying to keep those kids in schools, they can graduate on time. We've had nine GEDs passed, which is good. Last year, last fiscal year, we had six. Anytime we get a kid to get a GED, we always encourage them to go to Gadsden State to try to continue their education. Some do, some don't, but at least they do have a piece of paper that'll help them move forward as far as employment anywhere they go. So really, it's just a time for me to just thank you guys for what y'all do for us and, and keeping us in that building. Just for you to know that we're serving a lot of youth in our area, a lot. And that, you just stop and think, from between last year and this year, we're at two hundred and thirty-three in just two years. And that, that's a lot of kids, and we're talking about a staff of five, of five people. I did bring with me, uh, one of my counselors who, who wanted to stay behind and sit and watch me talk. Uh, those are the reasons that we are successful. And it's not because of anything that I'm doing, it's because the two counselors, the two teachers that I have, they put their heart into what they're doing with these kids. And these aren't the easiest kids sometimes to work with. You know, we're not talking about kids who wake up in the morning and say, oh, I can't wait to go to school today. We're not talking about those. We're talking about some you have to just drag. I don't mean literally, in case anybody's listening. I mean, you have to drag them to that finish line to get them to where they need to go with it. And if anybody, you know, is a Facebook person, SPAN of Etowah County, if you want to get on the SPAN of Etowah County's Facebook page, I encourage you to do that and read the last post that we put on about a young man who got his GED. It took him a year and a week to get his GED, but he finally accomplished that goal. So that's, that's some things that we're doing with the SPAN program. Again, I just want to thank y'all. That's what we're here for.
Do you do a, uh, like a, like your fifty-two students that went back, but do you do a kind of a follow-up to see?
Yes, ma'am.
Where they, uh, where they ba- basically uh, sort of end up after the program?
Last year, we had, no, we're a, a year-long program. We have from January to December, there's no summer breaks for anything that we do. Actually, our summers are usually busier sometimes because you're working with the kids trying to get back in the right grade. We had forty kids come through last fiscal year, mostly middle school kids. Out of those forty, we sent thirty-nine back. One didn't make it because she never came. She tested, but she never came back. Out of those thirty-nine, thirty-seven made it to the next grade. Two of them came back to us. And I'll take those odds all day long. I'll take that. We're not ever going to be a hundred percent. It's just not going to happen. But if I can get as many as we can back, I'll take that. We'll, we'll follow up with them when they go back.
That's good. We thank you very much because I know that there is a, there's a, there's a pipeline from school to prison.
Yes.
If we don't try to make a change in, in these students in middle school, that's a, that's a, that's a good grade.
Yes, it is.
Very good grade, but we appreciate everything that you do.
All right, thank you.
Uh, we now have uh, comments by the council. We'll start with Councilman Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, first and foremost, I want to say happy birthday to my buddy Brian Harbison. It's a big birthday boy today, so everybody pat him on the back if you get a chance. Other thing I want to say, I mentioned this on social media yesterday, but I'm so freaking excited about this. Um, we, last week, it was announced that Lathan Development Company has closed on the purchase of the Coca-Cola Building um, here in downtown in District five. That's a project that has been on the verge of demolition for the better part of five or six years. And there were so many people that worked really hard to try to save that thing and thought it was worth saving, so I just want to say a big thank you to Alabama Teachers Credit Union who owned the building, who waited patiently for us to go through probably three or four different developers trying to convince them to do something special there. Um, the Chamber of Commerce was very involved from day one. This was part of a five-year initiative to bring a small business incubator to Gadsden, and that's going to happen now as part of this restoration project, so I'm super excited about that. I think the total estimated investment in this project by the time it's finished is going to be close to eleven million dollars. So, um, that's all private dollars. That's all private money um, that we've brought into the city. So I'm super excited about that. One thing that I'm not super excited about that um, I just want to make a, a blanket statement about, this trend that has emerged over the last several weeks of young, younger teenage kids doing donuts in the middle of the street, up and down Broad Street at all hours of the night and filming it and putting it on social media. I'm just going to say one thing to the general public about this. There are about four hundred private commercial business cameras on Broad Street, and every one of them have the ability to capture license plates. So you younger kids that are out there doing this thinking it's funny and it's fun, you're going to end up in a lot of trouble. The second thing I'll say is to the business owners on Broad Street, especially the ones where this is happening out in front of your businesses, it is very irresponsible to claim that you don't have any control or power over what's happening when your customers leave your establishment. And I would encourage everybody on Broad Street to redouble their efforts to pay attention and to make sure that they're adding to a streetscape like we have in historic downtown and not taking away from it. Um, and the third thing is, I, I will again call attention to the fact that our pay rates for our first responders, this is a result of this. You know, we don't have enough police officers to have a constant presence like we used to have on Broad Street. We have the little Segway carts, you know, that we used to have a beat on, on Broad Street, and we simply don't have enough police officers right now to provide that level of service. So if, if we can't get the police department the resources they need to hire the people to, to do this, then maybe we increase the funding to Downtown Gadsden, Inc., and so they can hire a private security firm or something, because this is dangerous. Not only is it dangerous, but it's terrible. If you drive down Broad Street right now, there are tire marks all the way up and down this street. And every single intersection, there's huge donut tire marks. I've seen multiple videos posted about kids hanging out of car windows while they're doing donuts at ungodly speeds. This just can't happen. People have invested, the city and business owners in downtown have invested too much to create this space that we have in our historic downtown to have it just be ruined um, by some kids ultimately that think it's fun. And it's dangerous and it's not fun and it's destruction of property. Um, so please, I'm begging you, before this escalates any further, let's discontinue the TikTok trend of doing donuts on Broad Street. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I echo Councilman Wilson's concerns. Uh, part of my district's on Broad Street and I, I see those. We paint the intersections with the white and the burgundy and, and, and now it just doesn't look good, so uh, yeah, that, that really needs to stop. It's, I've seen some of the videos. There's some really nice automobiles uh, that I would think some parents have purchased for the people that are doing that. So uh, yeah, I'm, I'm calling on mamas and daddies. You know, pay attention if the, if your child's rear tires look kind of bald, maybe, maybe you need to have a conversation. Uh, want to thank Kevin Blackwood and your counselor for being here today. Y'all, y'all are unsung heroes. I mean, there's five of you guys and there's over a hundred teenagers that you're working with that really need that work. So thank you for what you do, for pouring your life in, into those into those teenagers' lives. Uh, y'all are making a difference. You're making a difference in that child's life and in our community, so you have a tough job and our hats are off to you. Thank you so much. Ms. Gaither, thank you. Uh, one of the first things I've learned when I got on the council is that Ms. Gaither and her team, they have a plan for every imaginable catastrophe. Uh, I went to a meeting one time and there's these real thick three-ring binders and it's all uh, laid out. It, it's all kind of rehearsed. It's almost like being in a, like a, a play at the theater or some. Everything is rehearsed and done. They, they, they work at it constantly. So when there is a catastrophe, they don't gather in a room and say, oh, gosh, now what are we going to do? It's, they, they already know and, and, and very organized and very responsible that uh, really has the, the hundred and some thousand people in Etowah County lives in your hands oftentimes. So thank you for what you and your, your team do and, and congratulations on that well-deserved honor. And uh, that's a big responsibility. That's a lot of counties. I had no idea that had that many counties in this region, so best of luck to you and thank you for what you do. I also want to thank the, Ron Summerall, the president of Alabama Teachers Credit Union on the Coca-Cola Building. Uh, Ron's a good friend and a, a very good leader, and he, he held the line on that when it, uh, maybe we're lesser men would have just given in to the pressures and just raised the building, but uh, thankful that didn't happen and looking forward to seeing great things come out of that project there. Also, uh, we've mentioned unsung heroes. We've got one in the second row, uh, our city engineer Heath Williamson. There are so many projects, if you just think about the amount of federal money that is poured into cities all across America. We're one of those cities, and so we sit up here and vote and then we go home and then uh, Heath has probably no telling how many projects that he's involved in up to his eyeballs. They all have to be measured and they all have to be uh, federal guidelines, state guidelines. You just don't get a pencil and a paper and start drawing off a, uh, like a drainage solution or a new street. So uh, his office is, of course, understaffed, and so we appreciate not only him, but his en- entire staff in the engineering department, but y'all, your, your workload has greatly increased and y'all are doing a great job, and we certainly appreciate what you and your office do for the uh, city. And then uh, also want to wish my buddy Brian Harbison a happy birthday. Went to Gadsden High School with Brian back, I don't know. Went to Gadsden High School with Brian back, I don't know, six decades ago, however long ago that was. Not six, but it's been a while, so happy birthday to Brian Harbison. That's all I have.
Councilman Worthy?
Well, I'll start off by saying happy birthday to him right off the bat, because I know he get tired of me calling him, but happy birthday. And I say congratulations to Ms. Gaither on a job well done. You know, it's a lot, that's a lot of work, but you and your team is outstanding. So I want to say thank you to the council for approving the, for our job fair and sponsorship of the annual job fair. This is the eighth year, August the 10th. And people are always talking about, well, we don't have jobs here. We have jobs. It may not be what you want, but it's a job out there. I went to Captain D's the other day, my granddaughter wanted fish for lunch. I go by Captain D's, they had a sign on the drive-through window saying they was not going to open up at eleven-thirty. So I went over to Chick-fil-A and got her something and took it to her and then I went back that evening for dinner. They only had two employees working and one of the ladies came from Center, Alabama, to give the manager a day off. You know, we have jobs out there and these restaurant jobs paying decent money. What happened to all of our kids that, you know, that used to work these jobs? And not only that, grown people, you know? So if you don't like the job, go get your qualifications and you can do, you know, have a better job. But there's jobs out there and we need you to take these jobs because that's why our revenue is declining. Our revenue here has been declining since December. So we need people to take these jobs. And like I said, August the 10th, from nine to one at the vineyard, we'll have a job fair. And then also on that note, I know the Sixth Street Pool is not open, but we've come up with three thousand dollars from our discretionary monies for any person that live in the city of Gadsden can go to the YMCA and swim. You just need to call the YMCA and find out when they have an open swim and they'll give you a day and a time and you can go. And just sign, you're from the city of Gadsden, you live in the city of Gadsden and they will give you a swim test and make sure you know how to swim. Then if you don't, you have to stay in the little, the short end, you won't be able to go to the deep end to swim. So I want to thank you to everybody and I know everybody would have gave, but two people were out of discretionary money like me. I got three hundred and something left and that'll go for food for the job fair. So, but thank you all. And I listen, there's a lot of good things going on in Gadsden. I know it's an election year and everybody is preaching doom, but we have some good things going on. So you can't listen to, well, I'm going to leave that alone. Thank you, have a good day.
Councilman Worthy?
Madam President, I would like to also wish Mr. Harbison a happy birthday. And I would not own up to being out of high school six decades. I wouldn't, I wouldn't let him put that out there. But no, and also congratulations to Deborah Gaither. Deborah, well-deserving of that award. And I've said this before and I'll say it again, Deborah, you might be one of the top three hires over the last ten years that we've had. And you do an outstanding job and we really appreciate your service, so thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say also, I was talking about the kids doing donuts a while ago on Broad Street and that kind of stuff. If adults are trying to slow down in their car, I've seen a bunch of adults, I seen one yesterday, a lady had to stop real quick and the man behind her raised up his finger and at her and he was mad because she stopped. You know, you just got to get out there and forget about the road rage and please, 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 slow down. There's nowhere you got to go in that big a hurry, you can't wait a little minute. And also too, I did want to wish Brian a happy birthday. He's been in our family, or I've been in their family, one of the two for over forty years now. I've really enjoyed it. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
I don't think anybody has to wonder what I think about Deborah Gaither and the EMA, so congratulations on that. And Brian, happy birthday, I just hadn't made up my mind about you. But anyway, listen, y'all, expound on this after I get through this next thing. I was coming, I was at home and Lee called me and said, what's going on down at Eddie Nichols' place across from Floyd? And I said, heck, I don't know. So I jumped the car and rode down there. When I got there, there were about fifteen or twenty grass-cutting jobs running all over the place, weed eaters running all over and down, across the street at Floyd and behind, the practice field at Sansom and all behind there. Seventy-five people estimated were down there working, cutting grass, cleaning up. And they said, Lee, that they went on up toward the trails. Was that right?
I saw all of the trails.
Okay.
With plastic bags.
Well, it turns out that Church of the Highlands thought enough of Eddie Nichols and his breakaway ministry to recommend them over at his Boys and Girls Club, which is free by the way, and a beautiful place, to come down and clean that up and cut all that grass and it looked great. A man told me there's two thousand churches and every weekend, I think one day or one day, they get together and do a thing like at a nursing homes or building ramps and all this sort of thing. I thought that was great, I didn't even know they were doing it. But when they did that number of people, it don't take long, Lee, buddy, they were, looked like ants out there going. Anyway, if y'all expound on that, it's great, but I think it's a wonderful thing that they're doing and Eddie Nichols' breakaway, their breakaway is moving on and doing a wonderful job. Tell them.
My topic this afternoon is trash. I got so many calls and we've talked about this and I asked the person that I was talking to, how can any of us up here tell grown people pick to pick up trash or not to throw trash out? If you care about your community, then you're going to pick up the trash. You can't blame Public Works, you know, you got to look at it and I'm not sure, but if you see people throwing out trash, I think you can get their tag number and turn it in, I don't know if, to the police department, but you can turn that in, but you've got the first care about your trash, not blame everything on the city council, not blame everything on Public Works. And I know that Public Works gets slack sometimes, Mr. Hilton, but I still say you all are doing a good job because I have called on Davis Street, they picked up trash that morning and that evening, trash was back out there again. So I'm just asking everybody, if you say you care about this city, you care about how it looks, instead of being a part of the cave group, then you'll do something about it. Citizens against virtually everything. I call for a motion to adjourn.